Now, so that we can have this for those who are unable to be with us this evening. So we are recording and we've got to still have a couple of minutes, but if you have any questions, pop your question in the chat and I'll be happy to help you if I can. You can directly send a chat to me or you can send it to everyone. So welcome and we'll get started here shortly. Thank you for being with us.
We're getting a few people in here, so that's, that's good. As I suspected, probably quite a number of people.
Whoops, Tim, sorry about that. I muted everyone and it meets you as well. Sorry about that.
I was gonna say, we, we have a lot of, a lot of folks here, but a lot of folks are watching the YouTube. Because that way you can do it when you want to or in pieces or, you know, running around scrubbing the floor while you listen or whatever. But, but it's nice to have this many folks still in the third week who are with us. We're getting close to 100 people tonight and they're about, there are about 450 of us that are engaged in this study. So that's, that's really exciting. So thank you all for doing that. It's just looking around and seeing you all is, whether you have your camera on or not, actually just seeing that you're here is a, is a good thing and it's a nice way to be the church together. And may also give your deacon or your pastor a little bit of time not to have to do that for a few weeks so that Bible study is better than scrubbing the floor, but you can do them at the same time, you know, if you're one of those multitaskers. I got seven o'clock, so we might wait another minute just to, because right at the hour, people do tend to, Zoom seems to slow down on people a little bit.
I think anything is better than scrubbing the floors.
Tammy, shall we get going?
Let's go.
And so, so yeah, we, we're glad to see you and we're gonna jump in today. But as always, we, we want to, to just pray tonight is chapters five and six in Mark's Gospel, but let's pray. Your word, oh God, is a light unto our path, a lamp unto our feet. It's, it's that which makes your presence known to us and, and even through us. So again, as we gather this evening with many, many, many concerns, some of them quite deep and personal and tough and some of them excitement and some of it just pressure and much of it stress from all the things that swirl around us. We, we pray that you would help us to focus in on the word given to your people of old and conveyed to us through your servant called Mark in this book, that we might know more about Jesus and that we might be formed into his likeness rather than continuing to try to form Jesus into my likeness or someone else's. So open us up in the wholeness of our being in the name of Christ. Amen. Well, I'm gonna look at sharing my screen, which is always part of the, one of the exciting parts of the, the evening. And are you all able to see that? Tammy, I can see you so yet not. Yes, if you can see that, so.
Yes, you may want to put it on presenter view.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm hitting the slideshow here. So yeah, there we go. Gospel of Mark, chapters five and six today. Just so happens as an aside that I saw it stored on the computer, Tim's BS. But that does stand for Bible study, right? Also this evening, we haven't really talked much about geography. So I wanted to hone in on that just a little bit because geography really is quite important, scripturally speaking as well. As you look at this whole area around the Sea of Galilee, also called Ganeserit, and we have a healing story today on Ganeserit. But when you see that, it just means Galilee. Ganeserit is the Hebrew word for harp, like the stringed instrument harp. Does anybody see on the map why they might've called the Sea of Galilee the harp? It's shaped like a harp. And it's about, if you look from Bethsaida up in the north to Santa Cruz down in the south, that's about 13 miles. And then if you look from Magdala, which one of our biblical characters was from there, right? Mary of Magdala and to Gergesah across, that's about six and a half to seven miles east to west. So it's a, it's a big body of water. And it also really important body of water. It flows on down, of course, into the Dead Sea and the Dead Sea is getting smaller and smaller and smaller historically. But in the time of Jesus, the Dead Sea was quite a bit bigger than the Sea of Galilee, but nothing lived in it. You couldn't fish it, you couldn't drink it or anything like that, even as it is today. So some of these places are particularly important. So for instance, in scribal transmissions of these gospels, we're pretty sure that the story of the casting out of the, the demon, the legion of demons in the land of the Gerasenes, you see the arrow there, was more likely scribal error and that had to have been the Gerasenes because Gerasene is about 40 miles southeast of the southern tip of the Sea of Galilee. And the way the story reads, they get right out of the boat and the, and the man encounters them right on the shore, the man who's got the demons and so, and there's no passage of time. And so it's probably Gergesah instead of the Gera, Gerasenes or Jorash in modern terminology. So, so keep this in mind. Again, way over to the west is the Mediterranean Sea. If you go off the map to the far southwest, you come down to Egypt and so forth through there. And what becomes important tonight is they're gonna go back and forth and back and forth on the water. And there's a symbolism to the back and forth on the water. In the time of Jesus, most everything north and west and even south of the Sea of Galilee is Jewish territory. Most everything east, so Gergesah, Hippos, Afech, Dion, all of those areas that they call the Decapolis, the 10 towns, that's Gentile territory. And when they go back and forth and back and forth, that symbolically tonight is what they're talking about, is the, is Jewish territory and Gentile territory. Jesus has different advice in Gentile territory and he's received differently in Gentile territory, for the most part, than he is in Jewish territory. So let's look at this and because some of these stories are so long and even stories within a story, I'm not gonna read every part of this. I'm gonna trust that you have read it or will read it. But as Jesus comes across to the other side of the sea, now wait a minute, where did we leave off? Remember chapter four, we ended with the, the stilling of the storm and he's walking across the water and they say, it's a ghost, it's a ghost. And then they were awed because he, he showed his authority over, over nature and calmed the sea. He just refrained it. So, so you get this guy, this guy in, probably in Gergesah instead of Gerasenes. And when he stepped out of the boat, immediately there's that word that we get over and over and over again in Mark. Immediately, a man came out of the tombs with, with an unclean spirit that possessed him and he lived among the tombs, no one could restrain him. The tombs are the area of obviously the dead, but also spiritual evil. Nothing could restrain him. He's like a, again, we talked about mental illness, but so he's just a crazy wild man whose, whose strength defies chains and everything else, howls, bruises himself. And then from a distance, he saw Jesus. Jesus didn't go to him. He ran to Jesus as Jesus gets out of the boat and says, what have you to do with me, Jesus, son of the most high God? Well, that on its surface doesn't look like anything, except once again, so far in the Gospel of Mark, who knows who Jesus is? Well, you and I do, because at the beginning, Mark said, the beginning of the Gospel of Jesus Christ, the son of God. We know it, but the disciples don't know it. Mama, brothers and sisters don't know it. Nobody who's Jewish knows who he is. The voice from heaven knows it, but nobody hears the voice from heaven in Mark's Gospel, except Jesus alone. But once again, the demons know, most high God is a Gentile nomenclature for the God of the Jews. I adjure you by God, do not torment me. So this demon asserts its authority, it's swearing at him. I adjure you by God, get away, don't torment me. And because Jesus had said to him, come out of the man, you unclean spirit. But Jesus said, hey, what is your name? Well, who cares, right? I mean, is that, is that what you're gonna say if you meet a demon possessed person and somebody's just completely beside themselves with power and attacking you and everything? Oh, by the way, what's your, what's your name? You know, I'm Tim. No, probably not. Except that, again, let's think of in ancient literature, when we're speaking, especially in Mark's Gospel of authority and power, a name is a real key to power. Remember for the Jews, you do not say Yahweh. And it's even offensive to Jews that I say right now Yahweh for the sake of study. They spelled it without the vowels so that you wouldn't have to even spell it. Because to call a name was to invoke and to suggest power over. There's all kinds of examples in all sorts of literature, even children's literature. You remember the children's story of Rumpelstiltskin? That, you know, you, you, you'll never guess my name because I have a funny name, you know, but then he gets tricked and so on. Because to have someone's name is to be able to exert power over them, to cast spells on them, to do all sorts of things. But this particular demon says, my name is Legion, for we are many. I think a legion is a Roman name for about 6,000 soldiers, something like that. Lots and lots and lots of demons. He begged him earnestly, send him out of the country. Earnestly not to send him out of the country. The other piece of demon lore, especially in ancient Near East, is demons can't exist just floating around in the air. Demons have to, they're, they're, they're parasitic. They have to have a host. They have to inhabit something. It's, it's part of their being. They might inhabit water, but they really need a living being to inhabit. So now on the hillside, there's a great herd of swine. Okay, now, right there, you know, wait a minute, we did cross the big lake, didn't we? Because why? Would you see a great herd of swine in Jewish territory? No, you would not, because swine, pigs were unclean. And the demons say, hey, can we go into them? Hey, let's cut a deal here. And so Jesus says, well, sure, why not? After all, Jesus is a Jew and he thinks pigs are unclean anyway. So you might as well combine the unclean demons with the unclean pigs and be rid of the whole bunch. And the unclean spirits came out and entered the swine and the herd numbering about 2,000, which is probably a mark and exaggeration, a hyperbole, rushed down the steep bank into the sea and were drowned in the sea. Oh, it's so dramatic, isn't it? So amazing that Jesus performs this thing. And these people are watching this and they're like, what? Who, who, who is this person? Do you remember when the folks came and lowered the paralytic, paralytic into the house where Jesus and the crowd were? You know, and everybody rejoices at this wonderful thing, but you're left wondering about the people looking at the roof saying, you're paying for that, right? Jesus, or you know, who's, who's gonna do that? These Gentiles are pig farmers. The economy of the city is based on the pigs and now their pigs are gone. The swine herds ran and told him in the city and the country, the people came to see what had happened and they saw the demon there clothed in his right mind and they were afraid. They're always amazed, astonished, afraid or scandalized. Those are the words in Mark, amazed, afraid, astonished or scandalized. Those who had seen what had happened reported it. They began to beg Jesus to leave their neighborhood. Get out of here. I mean, impressive, but you just destroyed our economy. I mean, as he was getting into the boat, the man who had been possessed begged him that he could go too. And, and Jesus said, nope, go home to your friends. Now look at this. Everywhere else, at the end of every miracle story so far in the Gospel of Mark, don't tell anybody, don't tell anybody, don't tell anybody, messianic secret among the Jews. But to the Gentiles, what does he say to the man? Go tell how much the Lord has done for you and what mercy. So go tell. And he did, and through the Decapolis, these, this region. Now, if we were gonna have a little fun with this particular passage, you know, you can imagine 2,000 pigs jumping off the cliff and that could be a good name, perhaps. Or some people might name it the first swine flu pandemic. Swine flu, see what, see what I did there? You know, okay, but I love to call it the deviled ham story of Jesus, when all of the demons went into the pigs. So, okay. Then we jump immediately now, when Jesus had crossed again in the boat. So now out of Gentile territory, back to the west, across to the other side, somewhere around Magdala and so forth, a great crowd gathers. He's by the sea and one of the leaders of the synagogue, Jairus, came. A leader of the synagogue, what, what is that? Well, somebody who arranged, led worship, also the building maintenance man of the actual synagogue building, begs Jesus, my little daughter is at the point of death, come and lay your hands on her so that she may be made well. This is a person with some street cred among the Jews who probably has exhausted all of his other options. And so Jesus went with him. And what you're gonna see here is something you see at least three, maybe four times in Mark's Gospel, and that is a miracle story within a miracle story. So you get Jairus and his daughter, who's at the point of death. Once again, large crowd comes pressing in, a woman who's suffering from hemorrhages for 12 years. It does translate hemorrhages very specifically. This woman would have been having a continual probably menstrual flow that not only made her terribly weak and inconvenience, would not be strong enough a word, but in every way in community in the Jewish world, she would have been unclean. Because every time a woman had her period, she would be unclean for a period of days afterward because blood and touching blood, even your own, is, makes you unclean. And so this, this has made her a complete outcast. Nobody else could touch her because she's bleeding. If you look at Leviticus 12, you can read all about why that was so. If you think about it, and it's one of those chicken or the egg things that we don't know the answer to, but, but you know, patriarchy, certainly that's a convenient reality that if that's one aspect of biological womanhood and we can keep women completely and ritually unclean perpetually, then, then patriarchy rules. But it was just a fact of Judaism in any case. She heard about Jesus, came up and touched and because she thought, if I just touch him, he doesn't even know. And immediately, there's the word, her hemorrhage stopped. She felt, heard she was healed and, and immediately aware that power had gone forth from him, Jesus turned around and said, who did that? Come on, fess up, who did it? And the disciple said, right, like who, no, I look at this crowd, everybody touched you. What are you talking about? And he looked around, but the woman, verse 33, knowing what had happened to her, came in fear and trembling and fell down before Jesus. Remember to fall down before Jesus is an act of worship intentional. So this unclean woman falls down, tells him the whole truth. And he said, daughter, which is a greatly endearing phrase, also tied to the reality of Jairus's daughter above, daughter, your faith has made you well. Go in peace and be healed of your disease, which I believe for Mark is also symbolic in addition to being describing an incident that just as God cares about this woman and wants to heal her from this uncleanness, this cut offness from community, cares about this little daughter as well that, that Jairus is leading him to. But meanwhile, you, this is heightening the drama with Jairus and his daughter because his, his daughter's dying. Come on, don't stop and talk to this woman. My daughter's dying. But then these people come from the leader's house and say, ah, too late. The, the little girl died. Let's, don't bother the teacher any further. And Jesus said to the leader, wait a minute, no, don't be afraid. And what is everybody's response to Jesus so far? Amazement, fear. And he says, only believe. And what has he said already to a couple of people? Faith has made you well. Faith has made you well. Only believe. And he allowed no one to follow him except Peter, James and John. They're the inner circle. They're the ones on the Mount of Transfiguration. They're the ones who do all sorts of things. When they came to the house of the leader, they saw the commotion, weeping and wailing, probably hired mourners, people paid to wail and weep. And he says, why do you make a commotion and weep? The child is not dead, but sleeping. Well, of course, sleeping was a euphemism for death in the Jewish world and the Greek world as well. So they laughed at him. Not funny haha, but funny nervous, no. What, do you know something we don't know? And he put them all outside and took the father and the mother and they went in where the child was and he took her by the hand. He touches her. So now he's touched the woman with the hemorrhage, with the blood. He's way unclean. He's in the leader of the synagogue's house. Don't forget whose house this is. He's already unclean. He's made this whole household unclean. Now he touches a dead little girl. You touch the dead, you're also unclean. And he says to her, and it's interesting, Mark does this about four times throughout the Gospel. He writes the Aramaic words of Jesus, which is closely related to Hebrew. But Jesus spoke Aramaic in his everyday word, Talitha cum, which means little girl, get up. And that's a word in scripture that has become a girl's name now. I remember my roommate in college dated a woman from Alabama and her name was Talitha. But she spelled it just like that and they got it from the Bible, but it means, means little girl. And immediately the girl got up, immediately, 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 do you see this? And began to walk about. She was 12 years of age and they were overcome with amazement. And now that he's back in Jewish territory, what does he say? Strictly order them, no one should know this and told them to give her something to eat. So let's just, let's just pause for a moment and think, okay, so now we know that Jesus has authority over demons. In fact, there are four exorcism stories in the first six chapters, four, seven chapters. He has authority over illness. He has authority over nature, the, the wind and the sea. Oh my gosh, he has authority over death. He has authority over the Sabbath. He has authority. I mean, now, if you are people in authority, and I'm not talking about Jewish people in first century Palestine, I'm talking about anywhere, anytime in history, the dynamic of humanity. If you are in power and somebody else comes along who doesn't follow the rules that you've put very much in place to continue and perpetuate that structure and that system and that power, are you happy with Jesus at this point? No, you are not. He is clearly and explicitly by this time in Mark's Gospel, a huge threat. Remember the scribes and the Pharisees are looking for ways to, to get him. Now, as all, as if almost symbolically, because he's been rejected in all sorts of places. He left that place and came to his hometown, tiny little place, by the way, Nazareth. The disciples followed and on the Sabbath, teaching in the synagogue, and they were astounded, amazed, astounded, afraid, astonished. And they said, where did this man get all this? What is this wisdom given to him and what deeds of power are being done by his hands? And look what they begin to say now. This, is this in, does the carpenter, the son of Mary and brother of James and Joseph and Judas and Simon are not his sisters here with us? And they took offense at him. And again, took offense. They were scandalized by him. I sat behind him in homeroom in the seventh grade. I know this guy. He's not anybody. This is, and it's an insult as well. Now please remember, this is Mark's Gospel. This is not a generation later with Luke's telling. And one of the great big, if, if you talk to some of the, the scholars that are more liberal and free thinking, the Marcus Bords, the John Shelby Spongs and others of the world, and even some Roman Catholics who have, you know, at least academically pondered it. If the virgin birth were such a major deal, why would three of the four gospels leave it out as, as, as a major point? But I personally, I'm not sure from a plain old academic standpoint that I believe that by the time of Mark's Gospel, that that was something that Mark even knew about, much less intended to tell us about. Called us the son of Mary, it's probably entirely, you don't ever refer to a Jewish person by their mother's name. You would say the son of Joseph. It's quite possible for Mark's Gospel that Jesus is thought of as an illegitimate child, so to speak, at least by the townspeople, regardless of what God is up to. But that is very clearly an insult when they call him the son of Mary, because Mary was not revered at this point. And then Jesus said prophets are not without honor, except in their hometown. That's a quote that was not just in religious circles, but a ancient Palestinian Near Eastern quote, among their own kin and in their own house. And he could do no deed of power there, except that he laid his hands on a few sick people and cured them. And you know how many times they've been amazed? Now he's amazed at what? Their unbelief. What did he say to the people that he cured? Great is your faith, great is your faith, do not be afraid, only believe. But who doesn't believe? The people who know him the best. So I just, so let's just recap where we are in the Gospel of Mark already. By whom is Jesus rejected? Certainly described in the Pharisees, definitely by his family. Now he's rejected by his hometown. It's not going well. In the popular sort of a world of the crowds who have no investment in him, they're amazed and he's certainly accomplishing healing, but otherwise not so much. This little piece here is kind of a bridge between sections of Luke's Gospel. And then right after this, and a whole new section that goes all the way through chapter eight really begins in a stylistic or literary kind of a way. And it talks about, he went among the villages teaching. Mostly we've seen him miracle working here, but he also goes into the synagogues and teaches and he's teaching now in the various villages. He calls the 12, begins. He calls the twelve, begins to send them out by two by two and give them authority over the unclean spirits. So not only does Jesus have authority, he's able to pass that authority on to others, even over unclean spirits. He orders them to take nothing except for a staff, no bread, no bag, no money in their belts. This is the classic argument this time of year in congregational finance committees of every denomination about why we shouldn't pay the preacher very much. Um, but to wear sandals and not to put on two tunics. And he said to them, wherever you enter a house, stay there until you leave the place. I'm always been amused at that particular uh command, because that's sort of like, you know, well, did you find your glasses? Yep, you know, it was in the last place I looked for them. Well, I hope so, who finds their glasses and yet keeps looking for them? Um, you always stay in a place until you leave it, um, don't you? Great, great uh sort of college uh philosophy uh pondering, like wherever you go, there you are. Think about that. Uh, if any place will not welcome you, and they refuse to hear you as you leave, shake off the dust that is on your feet as a testimony against them. Uh, there was a practice in ancient and even more modern Judaism um that before you go back to uh, to Israel, if you've been in Gentile territory or unclean territory, you clean off your feet so you don't believe, you don't bring pagan or unclean dust into the pure faith, the pure land, the pure religion, whatever. Uh, of course, whenever we talk about purity historically, not just scripturally, it seems that we get in huge trouble. And they went out and proclaimed that all should repent, and they cast out many demons and uh anointed with oil, many who were sick and cured them, that was an old Jewish uh custom of anointing with oil that heals. So uh, and we'll get to questions here in a little bit, but uh I want to kind of get through this piece, the death of John the Baptist, remember when I said the first week? Modern scholarship, meaning in the last fifteen, twenty years especially, and a lot of this has to do with archaeology in the area south of Jerusalem, around the Qumran community and so forth, we're learning more and more that John the Baptist was way, way, way more than just a minor player in the story of Jesus. In fact, there is some sense that perhaps in the first century while Jesus was around, and even after his death, that John the Baptist was more of the powerful figure and the worshipped figure. And, and that and, and that Mark would tell us more about John in the middle of the story, and, and in fact, quite a bit about John in such a short Gospel. He tells us about King Herod. Now, remember, this is not the King Herod, I'm going to show you a chart in a little while. This is one of the sons of King Herod the Great, who was around when Jesus was born, the one who decided to kill all the boy babies when the Magi came and said, ooh, where's this child that, you know, we followed the star and so forth? And some of the people, when they see Jesus, they're saying, John the Baptizer is raised from the dead, and for this reason, powers are at work in him. Uh, but others said, it is Elijah. Now, wait a minute, John the Baptizer raised from the dead? Who took, we didn't know that he died, we're going to hear about that in a minute. Others said it's a prophet, like one of the prophets of old, but when Herod heard of it, he said, John, whom I beheaded, has been raised, oh, okay, now we get it. Here's an interesting chart. You see that Herod the Great was the king of Palestine from about thirty-seven until about four B.C. Uh, the calendar has, uh, we're, we're almost certain that Jesus was, there was no zero, by the way, but he was not born in one B.C. or one A.D. or one C.E. or one B.C.E. He um, because Herod the Great is a big part of Jesus' birth story when Jesus is two years old, so and we know for a fact historically that Herod the Great had already died in four B.C. So that makes it interesting. Uh, he kills the baby boys and so forth, but he has all of these sons, and when he has this huge territory, he splits it up among his sons, and the one we're talking about now is Herod Philip, uh, near the middle. Not Antipas Archelaus and Herod Philip the Second and so forth, or Antipater Alexander Aristobulus, not those. And Herod Philip has been made the ruler of Galilee, where Jesus is from, and also Peria, a smaller, much smaller area, and then the rest of the kingdom of Herod the Great was split up among the other sons, and there was all sorts of drama and assassinations and power grabs among them. Now look at this, Herod Aristobulus uh has um, who is the brother of this Herod Antipas, that we're, uh, actually, we're not talking about Herod Philip, we're talking about Herod Antipas, I'm sorry. Who is the Tetrarch of Galilee and Peria, and uh, this is, uh, Antipas and Aristobulus are brothers. Herodias, it says here, is uh, is, is the daughter. And, and, and now he, she marries uh Herod Philip, but then she marries Herod Antipas. Josephus, who was a Jewish scholar of the first century, not a biblical scholar, but just a recording scholar, he actually says that Herodias is Herod Antipas's mother-in-law. So it's actually his niece or his mother-in-law, in any case, if you read Leviticus eighteen, she's not allowed to be married to Herod Antipas. And John the Baptist calls him on it and said, it is not lawful for you to be with her. And so Herod Antipas likes John the Baptist, and so he's gonna, uh, he's going to um continue to listen to him, and he's afraid to kill him, but Herodias, who has been called the woman of the scarlet letter by John the Baptist, just wants to kill him, and she's looking for an angle. And so you get this really dramatic story. So, you know, uh, he's imprisoned because uh he's been saying it's not lawful for you to have your brother's wife, and Herodias had a grudge against him, wanted to kill him, but she couldn't, because Herod feared John and so on, and uh, he was greatly perplexed, but he liked to listen to him. Now, you get this party scene and these vows and this public commitment to vows, an opportunity when Herod on his birthday gave a banquet for his courtiers and officers and leaders of Galilee, and his daughter Herodias came in and danced, and she pleased Herod. Now, the word for danced and the implication here is very erotic, um, if not nudity involved, which would have been very much opposed to the Levitical law as well. Uh, it, it's a, it implies it, uh, the Richard Strauss uh classical piece, The Dance of the Seven Veils, is about this story and about the daughter of Herodias, uh, she went out and said to her mother, what should I ask for? She replied, the head of John the Baptizer, and she rests back, and so they kill John and bring his head on a platter. What a gruesome story. King was deeply grieved, and he sent to the executioner, and they beheaded him and brought the head on the platter and gave it to the mother, and they took his body and laid it in a tomb. Uh, here's uh more, a more ancient drawing, but The Dance of the Seven Veils, we don't really have anything like that in our culture, clearly the closest thing would be belly dancing, maybe. Uh, but it's a bunch of men lecherously looking at a young woman, including her stepfather, who is taking great delight in not only sharing this, um, this is a really gruesome picture of, the daughter of Herodias, Josephus tells us, is Salome, uh, or as the southerners, deep southerners say, Salome, you know, uh, Salome, uh, who did the dance of the seven veils. Scandalous, but that's what happened to John the Baptist, and now um, all eyes, if they were on John, you know, Obi-Wan now has died, but all eyes are on Luke, um, you know, to make your Star Wars analogy here. So the apostles gather around Jesus and told him all that they had done and taught when they were out casting out demons, and he said, let's go to a deserted place all by yourselves and rest for a while. Remember when he did that at the very beginning? In the morning, while it was still dark, he went away to a deserted place to pray, and the disciples came looking for him and said, hey, everybody wants you, they need you, everybody wants to be healed. And Jesus is like, yeah, and sometimes you have to rest and you have to pray, so I hope you will give yourself a break a little bit. Father Francis Lonsway told me years ago, when I fell all over myself apologizing for asking him to do something, he said, stop it, Tim, stop it. Said, there's not a soul on this planet any busier than he or she chooses to be. You think about that, he's right. He said, now, you might not like the consequence of letting some of these things go, but it is your choice. And uh, so that's an interesting way to put it, I think sometimes we see ourselves as a, as a victim of busyness. But we don't like to think of ourselves as perpetrators of busyness, because we choose to do more than we're able to do, you gotta get away, you gotta pray, you gotta center. I have to, you have to, it's, it's part of the way we're built. And if we think that we're above that, then we're also saying we're above Jesus, because she, he sure had to do it. So they did, so all these people were coming and going, no leisure even to eat, and they went away to a boat, and, in a boat, to a deserted place, and people saw what they were doing and hurried around the corner of the lake uh, on, on foot and arrived ahead, and he went ashore, and guess what he saw? A great crowd. And he had compassion for them. Compassion is certainly the English translation of the Greek, but it comes, it's the same in Greek, basically. It comes from two Latin words, or two Latin words come from it. With is C.O.M., calm, compassion. Passion means to suffer. It's not a good feeling for somebody, it's not to take pity on somebody in your heart and feel sorry for. Compassion means to step into someone's suffering and suffer with them. This is a foreshadowing in Mark's Gospel of why Jesus is and who Jesus is. Why did he have compassion? And this is certainly an image that Jews would understand, because they were like sheep without a shepherd. Anybody ever raised sheep? Anybody ever seen sheep? I mean, sheep are, my mama wouldn't let me use the word stupid, so I can't say that. Sheep are not intelligent. They don't have sharp teeth, they don't have claws, they can't run fast. Sheep are helpless, they are helpless. And so sheep without a shepherd are completely vulnerable, and that's the way Jesus feels toward this crowd, simply because they have a need and they're so desperate to hear and, and to receive what he has to give them, so he teaches them many things. And then here's a familiar one that you know. Um, and uh, when it grew late, the disciples came and said, hey, we're in the middle of nowhere, it's really late, you better send these people away so they can get something to eat. And Jesus said, and this is one of my favorite Bible verses, you give them something to eat. And the disciples are, well, and, and of course, they're thinking real practically, and they say, what? Are we going to go and take two hundred denarii, which is two hundred days' wages, the better part of a year, worth of bread, and give it to them to eat? And he said, well, how many loaves do you have? And now, this is not Luke, there, there's no little boy, you know, with the hidden fish and the loaves. Uh, this is not John, um, how many loaves do you have? Go and see, and they, they found out, and they were able to wrestle up five and, and two fish. And he had the people sit down in groups, and they hundreds and fifties, and he took the five loaves and the two fish. Now look what he does, this is classic and standard Jewish meal, Jewish Passover, which later becomes Christian Eucharist. And the fact that Jesus does this is, of course, a foreshadowing uh that Jesus not only cares to their spiritual malady by teaching, their physical malady by healing, but he, he feeds them as well uh and takes care of their need, so the four verbs, um, so he took the, the loaves and the fish. He took, he blessed, he broke, he gave. Sound familiar? Have, has anyone ever heard this formula? In the night in which he was betrayed, our Lord Jesus took bread, took, gave thanks, thanks, broke it, broke, and gave it to his disciples, saying, anybody ever heard that? Classic Jewish meal uh verb progression. So everybody eats, and they took up twelve baskets full of bread and fish. Uh, there's more than enough for everyone with enough to feed the twelve tribes of Israel left over. The abundance of Jesus' presence that overflows in every possible way. You know this next one too. Ooh, look at this word, immediately, 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 immediately. He made his disciples get into the boat, go to the other side, you see how they're going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth? But this time it's not east-west, he's kind of going uh northwest, he's going to Bethsaida, up right, almost directly north on the Sea of Galilee, and he dismissed uh the crowd, and after saying farewell, he went up on the mountain to pray, so as busy as he is, what's he doing again? Scooting away, dismissing the crowd and praying. I remind myself all the time, because I'm guilty, I love to tell everybody how busy I am, how hard I work. Man, I do work hard, and I am proud of that, in a sinful way, probably. Um, but Jesus felt the need to go pray and pray and pray. Maybe I take a clue from that, and you do too, right? When evening came, the boat was out on the sea, and he was alone on the land, and they saw they were straining the oars against an adverse wind. The Sea of Galilee can have very sudden horrible storms. And then early in the morning, he came toward them, walking on the sea. And he intended to pass them by, but they saw him walking, thought it was a ghost, they saw him and cried out, were terrified, and immediately spoke to them and said, take heart, it's I, don't be afraid. And he got in the boat, and the wind ceased, and they were utterly astounded, astounded, amazed, afraid, scandalized. For they did not understand about the loaves, but their hearts were hardened. My Bible dictionary describes hardened heart as obtuse stubbornness. And now, healing the sick in Ganeserit, what is Ganeserit? Well, it is a town, but it also means the Sea of Galilee. They crossed over, they came to Ganeserit, moored the boat, got out, people recognized him, rushed in like all around, bringing the sick on mats. Wherever he went, they were just bringing all their sick people and begged him that they might touch even the fringe of his cloak. Jewish rabbis were required to wear a cloak with fringes on it, in a certain prescribed way in Leviticus, and everybody who touched it were healed. And everybody who touched his cloak made him what? Unclean. So, um, that's a that's a lot, isn't it? And I see that there's a lot in the chat bar, but um but I know one question is, maybe Joseph had already died? Uh, quite, quite likely Joseph had already died um by that time, we just don't know in Mark's Gospel, because there's no mention of Joseph. But still, it wouldn't matter if Joseph had died, they still should have called him son of Joseph. Unless they didn't think or didn't know who his daddy was, I, that's just speculation on my part. On the, the, the feeding uh occurred on the east side of the Sea of Galilee. Uh, yeah, this would be a better banquet than the one Herod had. The kind of ew gross sort of pedophilish, um, and, and Richard Strauss's uh musical piece and the, the dance, usually that's accompanied by a dancer with the seven veils, and it's, we had a woman in our um congregation in Boone who had grown up Jewish, and uh and had grown up in the deep south, and her, her name was uh Salome, Salome Koval. I think her daughter Sharon Koval is uh, is still, uh, or actually her son, Terry Koval is still there in Boone, and uh and she died soon after I got to Boone twenty-five years ago. But uh, I said, oh, your name's Salome, I've never really known anybody named that. And she always quoted a little poem that the kids used to taunt her with at school to tease her because of her name, and it went like this. Salome danced the hoochie cooch, and when she danced, she didn't wear mooch. Um, you know, so uh- You know, so that was the, the story that Salome Koval in Boone used to tell us about how the kids picked on her. So, you know, some of the other questions. But yeah, 2,000 pigs, that's a lot of pigs. yeah, so, Harry Potter, yeah, Mary, you're right. I'm sorry, the verse of Mark, I, I didn't have a chance to, to jump in on that, so I don't know at what point that occurred in the, in the text. But we've got another several minutes, or if, if you all want to jump in, and at this point, I can read the chat bar in real time. I mean, I threw a lot at you, but think about these, and I'm seeing more in the chat bar too. Scott Walters talks about the demoniac. What strikes me, Jesus doesn't try to dominate him, but instead asks his name. Cheese him, talk to him. Works out a deal with him. Okay, you can't have this man anymore, but I'll find you a place to go. You're right, Scott. Pretty classic Jesus. We do need to see people and talk to them. It's easier not to, right? It's not convenient, because if I engage you and, and we're not the same, then you know, I, I don't have a whole lot of choices. I have to kind of hate you and dismiss you, or I gotta love you and engage you. I mean, you know, and it's hard to love people, especially if they're, if it's going to change me. So somebody, Ben Cray, Pastor Ben, heard a sermon on Mark, forgetful minds led to hardened hearts. Hmm, that's interesting, yes. The disciples forgot about feeding the 5,000, yeah. You will notice in Mark's Gospel, especially that as opposed to the longer you go, the more the disciples seem to be getting it. The longer you go in Mark's Gospel, the more oblivious the disciples seem to be. Including in next week's texts, we're going to get some really explicit places where Jesus tells them some stuff. And they turn around and completely, like immediately in response to what he just said, it's, they weren't, they simply weren't listening. You know, especially after he starts predicting that he's going to have to die. And the first thing the disciples want to do is say, ooh, well, when, when you come into the fullness of your kingdom, can I sit on your right hand? Can I sit on the left hand? I want the best place when we get to be in the, you say, did you not hear what I just said? If you want to follow me, you have to suffer, and now you're talking about the, the exaltation and the places of honor? No. That's, that's the old way. It's not, that's not how it is anymore. That's not how it is. Ganesarit, a Roman barracks? Town, oh yes, there's a Roman barracks there. The demonic is a, is, is a PTSD soldier, right, quite possibly being the, the case, and I didn't know that the bore. Okay, that's B-O-A-R, not B-O-R-E. Yeah, I get nervous with that word as a preacher. The bore was a legion symbol. So, but yeah. Yeah. I tend not to hear what I don't want to hear. Ask my wife. And I would say the same of her. I mean, we, we all have selective hearing, don't we? Yeah, of course, there's the possibility, and this is an old preaching pondering, we don't know this, but the possibility that at the feeding of the 5,000, the miracle is that everybody had food, but they were hiding it because they didn't want all the other hungry people to see it and take it, and so the miracle was that people began to share it. To me, either way, that's a miracle. If people let go of their stuff, you know, whenever we get in a finance situation in a congregation or now in the synod, I always try to remind people that when we start lamenting how far behind we are in the budget, or how much less we have, and how scarce everything is, and how terrible everything's going, I'm like, on the other hand, in all honesty, if you tried to just look at this objectively, you're the little Martian that flies down and says, who are these Christians? And you're just kind of spying on those Christians and reporting back to your leader who they are. Here's the thing. The, the, the wonder is not the scarcity, the wonder is that people share out of the goodness of their hearts. This is no European church tax. This is stuff people give. This is people's time that they pour into the, the life and work of the church in mostly really small and powerful ways to do things for other people and to visit and to take care and to encourage and to lift up and to, and to show up. Given my and your, especially from a Lutheran standpoint, sinful, curved in on self tendency to make it all about me, the wonder of church is that it is at all. Not that it struggles sometimes. I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's kind of where you put your perspective, but food didn't come from supermarkets back then. People didn't just give it to others, yep. Oh, now Sandra Klein's going to pull the Rufus Muretts card at Lenore Ein. 20th century? Okay, and explain the feeding of the 5,000 people just brought their stuff. Yeah, that's the same thing that Grant was saying that, that Pastor Matt had shared. So, yeah, Rufus Muretts is like a church 2.0, yeah. So anyway, just to, again, to recap, the, we now know that Jesus is very clearly displaying his authority within Jewish territory. He wants that to remain quiet for now. Because there's something else more central to who he is than miracle working and healing powers. Although it's related, because in Jewish way of thinking, healing, salvation, physical malady, sin, they're all tied up as the same thing. They're not as disconnected as we might think of them in our way of looking at it today in this world. But the demons know who he is, the voice from heaven knows who he is, you and I as the reader know who he is. We're just watching the drama unfold for people to figure that out and how they react. We don't know exactly about the scribes and the Pharisees in particular, and the Herodians that have been mentioned, the governmental people. It's possible that some of them may indeed suspect who Jesus is. But once again, who's going to voluntarily lay down power and authority and give it away? It has been done. It has been done many times in history, not just in religious circles. But it is extremely rare, and I will propose to you again, that the most powerful person is not the person who takes up weapons and goes in with guns blazing. But the person who is so strong that they voluntarily lay it down and say, here I am, do with me as you will. Because the worst thing you can do with me will not be the last thing that God has to say. Tammy, we've been talking in very personal ways, right? If this is the worst thing, then this is not the last thing.
That's right.
And it can be pretty worst, right? Very, very profound ways. So we got about three minutes. Next week will be a pretty foundational week. It's going to be a turning point week in Mark. Where now Jesus is very clear and explicit about where he is, who he is, and what that means. And now how all of the systems balk at that, especially system power. Not to say that I'm, I would be or am any different, right? I'm not trying to throw ancient Palestinian first century Jewish religion under the bus. I mean, heck, if anybody on this screen is religious establishment, now it's me. You know, a gatekeeper, a definer of how God can be revealed, and you know, we got to be awfully, awfully careful with that and not take ourselves too seriously, don't we? So tune in next week when we hear Peter say, you are the Messiah, and we hear Jesus say, right, but it's not what you're thinking. Thank you also very much. I hope you're blessed, not so much by my words or thoughts. My, my hope is, is not to impart to you great wisdom, because I don't have that. But maybe to bring up questions or possibilities or things where the spirit gets a little bit of focus and opening. This, it's already working in your life, but maybe that we just pay a little bit of attention right now, just by our setting aside some time to focus on this word. And maybe see not get the spirit working, but pay attention where that spirit already is. So thank you for the time and blessings on your week till we gather again.
All right, go in peace, to love and serve the Lord.